As the mayor of the town of Clayton, I've called this regular town council meeting to order and asked you to join me in the pledge of allegiance and the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Most gracious in heavenly father, we thank you for the many blessings bestowed upon our town, and we ask lord now for your guidance as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton. For it's in Jesus's name I pray. Amen. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, mayor, this is Adam Lindsey, town manager. We have one adjustment under the consent agenda. We are going to remove B, Payton Drive Extension Project Resolution Authorization to acquire certain property of George and Candace Smith.
So we're going to remove the consent agenda item C. I got that.
We're going to re- remove it completely, yes.
Remove it, got it. All right. Are there any others?
Nothing else.
All right, if not, okay, thank you. If not, we will take up an item of significant importance, which is the rules and procedures for meeting participation. And I'll turn it over to the town attorney, Catherine Ross.
Thank you, mayor, Catherine Ross, town attorney. As we are experiencing tonight doing our first remote meeting, the first agenda item is to adopt rules of procedure which allow for such a remote meeting. Those are in your agenda packet. This is an amendment to the town council's rules of procedure, which are already in existence, and adds Rule 25, which addresses how we will handle remote participation tonight and going forward as necessary. And I'm available if there are any questions. Mr. Mayor, I believe we no longer have the feedback. And so if you want to proceed, if there are any questions for me on this item, otherwise it just needs considerations through a motion.
Thank you, Catherine. Are there any questions for the town attorney? If not, I will entertain a motion to adopt the remote meeting participation.
This is Michael Somu. Speaker Bobby Second.
We have a motion by Michael Granis and a second by Bobby Bun. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Up next is your consent agenda.
We approve. This is Art.
This is Bobby Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Art, seconded by Bobby. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
This is Michael, I have one question.
Aye. Go ahead, Mr. Granis, what's your question?
I believe that the town manager has had an adjustment to the consent agenda, deleting item B, the Zenboi, Payton Drive Extension Project Resolution Authorization to acquire certain properties.
That is correct. So we have a motion and a second for approval for the record omitting consent agenda item B. Is there any further questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. And the motion carries. Okay, up next on the agenda under old business is the Noose River Water Reclamation Facility Revenue Bonds Issuing. And I'll give the floor to Robert Mackay, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Tonight, we're asking council to take action on a supplemental bond order for the water sewer system. What's of interest there is that the town with the supplemental bond order is increasing its debt coverage ratio on revenue bonds from 110% to 125%. And that is in line with what the credit markets expect. The second item is the actual adoption of the bond order series resolution for the bond, where the LGC approved the town's application of $15 million on April 7. And so tonight, we're asking council to take the formal action to approve the series resolution to issue $15 million in a private placement to Capital One Bank for a term of 20 years at 2.88% interest. Those proceeds will be used to procure two nutrient credit purchases, totaling approximately $13.7 million. We'll have $135,000 in closing costs. And the remaining 1.2 million will be used for site remediation. Any questions, I'll be happy to entertain that.
Are there any questions for Mr. Mackay? Okay, there being no questions, then I'll entertain a motion.
This is Art, I make a motion to approve.
This is Avery Everett, I second.
Okay, I have a motion by Art and a second by Councilman Everett. Everett, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Okay, the second action that we would need to take would be the adoption of the resolution number 2020-14.
This is Jason Thompson, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution 2020-14.
This is Art.
This is Avery Everett, I second.
We have a motion made by Councilman Thompson and a second by Councilman Holder. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the adoption of the revolution, or resolution, say aye.
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 Opposed, like sign. The motion carries. All right, up next, under new business. Under new business is the 2020 audit contract. And I'll give the floor back to Finance Director, Robert Mackay.
Good evening. And tonight, we're asking council to approve the audit contract for fiscal year 2020. There's no change in the fee structure on the audit contract. And what I would like to point out to council is in your agenda package on the last page of the audit contract package, there's a copy of the peer, the most recent peer review letter that's dated July 17, 2019. The peer review, the ratings are pass, pass with deficiency or fail. Anderson, Smith, and White received a peer review rating of pass, which is the best rating you can get in a peer review. So I thought that'd be of interest for council to take note of that in regards to our current upcoming audit for 2020.
Okay, are there any questions regarding the audit contract as presented? Okay, since there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
This is Avery Everett, I move to approve the contract.
Jason Thompson, lose to second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval of the audit contract. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. The motion carries. The next item under new business is the budget amendment. And again, I'll turn that back over to Finance Director, Robert Mackay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we're asking council to adopt, approve two budget amendments. The first amendment involves the utilization of restricted fund balance to subsidize the replacement of a cubicle system that will increase the functionality for our police department. And the funding gap is being bridged with unauthorized substance tax distributions from a prior year that remain unspent. And we're also using funds from the inspections revenue, fee revenues, to do a relocation of the inspections department down into the town hall basement that will provide flexibility and future growth in town hall. The second amendment is to fund, we're realigning the capital outlay budget, the current year's capital outlay budget, to fund the Luda Creek Outfall Sewer Line Capital Project Fund. If there's any questions on those budget, either one of those budget amendments, I will be happy to entertain any questions.
This is Councilman Granis. I have several questions pertaining to the building improvements. The first one would be, I understand we've had some challenges with respect to the renovation process, and was curious to know if that has been resolved, and if so, how?
Councilman Granis, this is Robert Mackay, the Finance Director. I do not have the information to be able to answer you at the moment. I don't know if there's somebody else on the line, whether it be Rich Capola or Joshua Baird that might be able to answer your question.
This is Rich Capola, Public Services Director. To date, we've been able to clean out the basement. We had a lot of stored, basically, old cubicle systems and other files that needed to be removed, some of which were taken to the dump, some of which, you know, the files were cleaned and have been gone through by the different departments that own them to thin out anything that could be destroyed for our record protection policy. So we've been able to get everything cleared out of the basement at this point and all the other, all the other work from the construction standpoint in terms of starting to build out the basement to be able to replace drywall, weatherproof from the inside, condition the space, as well as prepare for getting the floor and the bathroom built down there to be habitable are now progressing. And we're hoping to have all that completed here in the next 30 days, assuming we can stay on schedule based on, you know, our contractor's availability.
So I'm going to assume that you and your team are satisfied that there's no issues with moving forward with respect to renovation under any circumstance?
That is correct. We've had professionals down there following up on all the work that's being completed. The one outstanding item, particularly with regard to drainage around the outside of the building, any external work will be handled, will be folded into the parking lot project, which we're hoping to have that information here in the next 30 days as well so that we can figure out what needs to be incorporated in terms of French drains or otherwise on the external part of the building tied into the future parking lot project.
Okay. And where's the money coming from for this?
The, by statute, it's coming from prior year inspection fees, revenues that are restricted or used by the inspection department. So in prior years, we, our revenues we've collected from inspection fees have exceeded expenditures. And by statute, those revenues are restricted to use for, by the inspection department. So what we're doing is we're using some of those revenues, excess revenues, to fund this $150,000 improvement that's directly related to inspections. That's why, that's why you see it coming as a fund balance appropriation.
So am I correct then to assume that the entire cost would be coming from those fees?
Correct, the 150. Yes, sir.
I've been, gone on record that I'm not in support of this particular renovation. And I still have some concerns. One of my concerns is that we have used the Clayton Center for a few offices with respect to renovation and moving departments over there, one of which happens to be the accounting department and the other is PIO. I am more in favor of doing something like that. That's just a statement, but a couple of other questions that I have is, is the necessity for this because we have actually run out of space or because of additional potential hires, we will run out of space? Or is it something different than either of those two?
Do you want to add? I think I can handle that. So it's not so much of hires in the inspections department. This is, this is part of our looking at what's going on upstairs right now in this building with the planning, engineering, and inspections that are all co-located right now. And trying to get a better fit for really the planning and engineering departments and then GIS departments that are upstairs. Currently, where the inspectors are, that could be space that we could utilize for those departments as they continue to expand and grow. And the downstairs, and remember, this was a school, so those were all classrooms before, they've been, they've been lived in in years in the past. But the access point downstairs actually is better for the inspectors because they're out in the field so much. So having, having them by that exterior door, they're actually pretty excited about that because it's going to allow them to get in and out of the building much quicker and more efficiently to do their jobs. And what we've realized as we've gone through this project that there's, there's other opportunities for regaining some of that space that was being utilized for storage. So moving them downstairs is in a direct reflection of the hiring of inspectors, but it certainly is moving pieces around as we try to figure out the needs and space needs of our planning and engineering departments in particular.
What other options were considered?
Well, last year, at the budget, we had, we had looked at moving the inspectors down to the parole, so the place where the parole is right across from police. When we looked, considered that as well, but we thought keeping them in this building for now is still a viable option. They do work closely still with the planning department and engineering department, so keeping them near them is still, still a good thing. So they, they actually identified that space themselves and said they'd really like to be down there. So it sort of worked out space-wise. It's going to give them an opportunity to be, I think, work even more collaboratively for the setup that they're looking at down there.
And do we have a timeline for when this, do we have a timeline for when this money is to be spent?
Are you talking about the project, like just an estimate of when the project will be completed?
No. The money is coming from inspection fees, correct? So is there a timeline that that, that money has to be, has to be utilized? Or can it come at a later date?
So this is Adam again.
There's no restriction on the statute that says the excess funds have to be spent in a given time period.
Okay. It just has to be spent on something that's peculiar to, to the inspections department?
That's correct.
This is, this is Art, I have a question. Can the money be spent on salaries?
Um, I, I, I believe it could be. I'm not 100% certain, but I believe it could be. I'd have to get clarification, but I would assume that it can be used on anything that is related to inspection activities.
And I feel like we should not spend that money at this time because we're in a period of great uncertainty. And there's a good possibility that there's going to be a big drop in housing starts, which means the inspection demand will drop. And we may need that money to keep some inspectors on after July 1st. That's my thoughts.
This is Adam again, and, and that, I very much appreciate that, that thought, Mr. Holder. Part of the need, though, at this point is cleaning up the downstairs and trying, trying to, you know, like Rich was alluding to earlier, we did have some water coming through. And so some of these funds really are important to us to get the downstairs cleaned up and our storage back in, in place in a way that's really important for the entire, entire building. So I would advocate that we still proceed with this, this transfer and this project at this time.
But unless it's spent for the inspection department, it can't be used for renovating and improving that area and moving water problems.
Right.
Well, this is Adam again, of course, the inspectors going down there, that is their space. And that, that's why we're using it for that.
But if they were not to move, that money could not be used to do what improvements would need to be done just to clean up the basement, is that correct?
Probably, yeah, we would not have looked at that, yes.
And how would you pay for it if that money was not spent for the inspections?
This is Adam again, of course, we, we didn't consider that option at this time because we'd already identified the inspections moving there. So we'd have to go back and look at the fund balance or some other way.
This is Michael. One of the things that I would like us to do prior to voting is to take each one of these separate.
I would recommend we postpone the, the last one, the building improvements, to the, to the May 4th meeting and vote on the other two. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Is that a motion, Art?
That's in a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for the second budget amendment ordinance number 2020-04-02, is that correct?
No, this is 20, 2004-01, it's the last item on that list.
I have another one after that, so it's not the last one on my list.
Yes. No, this was, I'm talking about the last item on 2020-04-01. I'll make a motion that that item be postponed to the May 4th meeting.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Catherine.
Yes, just for clarity, the ordinance combines, the ordinance 2020-04-01 combines a couple of things. And what I hear the motion, the recommendation be to uncouple those couple of things. And the motion I hear is for, I think, Art, you said, the tabling or postponing of the expenditure, and Robert, please make sure I get this right, but the expenditures line item of 150,9558-03 and 155,9558-20? Or is it only the, the last one there?
I believe Mr. Holder is referring to the 58-20, the 150.
Okay. Mr. Holder, is that correct? That your motion to postpone action is on the building improvements appropriation in the amount of 150,000?
Yes.
So the motion is to postpone action on that item as it is part of ordinance 2020-04-01? And I would suggest that you take a vote on that motion. And then the remaining items in ordinance 2020-04-01 would be subject for discussion and potential action.
Okay. So I want to join in with some discussion, and then I'll ask other council members for discussion. But I'm just trying to make sure that I haven't missed something. So I believe that we've all had discussions with staff about all of this. And I don't recall hearing any discrepancies with this prior to it being put on the agenda. So I'm trying to get clarity on what has transposed from then until now because I felt like we needed strongly to go ahead and get this, you know, rectified and in place. And I thought we were all in agreement. Now, I know that, you know, obviously, it's pretty obvious from Councilman Holder's input that he, he is, you know, concerned about future revenues and best way to utilize what we have. And I would just say to that, absolutely. However, I will commend this council and the last council for your commitment to fund balance for the town of Clayton. And these monies are there for just this type of project. And it's not like we're spending millions, it's a very minor investment. And I know all minor investments add up to be large investments. I'm not discounting that. But I'm just saying that this is something that we need to get in place so that we can operate more efficiently, that we can take care of the building, and that we can move forward. So I'm just not sure how the discussion and the change has gone prior to this evening. And I would, I just need better understanding on that from the council.
This is Michael. I've never been in support of this particular recommendation. And I have reason to believe that there, there could be some significant issues in that particular location, building-wise. And I'm also concerned now from the standpoint of the cost of, or the monies being utilized primarily because of the condition we're in in, in the world today with respect to the pandemic. We don't have any idea what to expect revenue-wise probably over the next year to two, two or three years. And I think we need to be evaluating the appropriateness of, of spending funding that we might could better utilize elsewhere.
This is Art. I agree with Councilman Granis's statement. I also recognize that the issues that are in that basement need be rectified regardless of whether we vote to spend this $150,000 or not. need be rectified regardless of whether we vote to spend this hundred and fifty thousand dollars or not. And we need to determine what the cost will be and find a way to pay for it.
This is Bobby. Have we, have we determined what the problem is yet?
Uh, this is Rich Paul, Home Services Director again. Uh, we, we've had several, excuse me, several professionals come down and inspect both the inside and external portions of the building to determine where the water's coming from. Uh, some of this work that the money was paid for was to be able to remove sheet rock, um, and other finishings from the walls so that we can get behind them and actually see where, frankly, under the first renovation of the building, uh, there were some holes that probably should have been covered up that we're going to, we're going to go ahead and close up as part of this. Uh, as well as some additional study money for an, an engineering study to determine where the, the water flow around the outside of the building is. And that's, that will be paid for as part of this money to then fold into, again, to the parking lot project if we have to do a larger exterior fix or remedy such as a French drain around the outside of the building or something like that to draw any, any groundwater away from the building. So uh, we've, we've got a pretty good handle on it. Like you said, we've got professionals down there kind of walking us through every step of the way and kind of checking, checking things off as we go. So, um, uh, so hopefully this is the last time we have to renovate the building or do anything outside of it, uh, at least with foreseeable.
And for clarity, Mr. Holder, can you tell me why you think it's necessary to postpone it until May? Is there something that else that you're looking for?
Well, I, I want to postpone it till May until the town manager can come up with what the cost would be to reconcile the border issue outside of spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
I do want one question, Michael. The, the other, other item under expenditures is furniture fixtures and equipment for thirty thousand dollars. Or I'm sorry, uh, for seventy six forty seven. I'm assuming that is not a part of the basement renovation. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's for, you subsidize to bridge the cost gap for the priest department's replacement cubicle system. Totally unrelated to.
I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'm going to ask the town clerk to restate the motion so we have clarity.
Thanks, Stacey. This is Kimberly Moffett, Town Clerk, and the ordinance I have from Councilmember Holder is that ordinance twenty twenty dash zero four dash one oh one be amended to remove the expenditure line of one zero zero dash five five dash nine five dash five eight two zero, removing that line item and postponing that until May fourth, twenty twenty.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Mayor, could I please get a roll call on that?
Yes, state your name for the ayes, please.
Michael.
Aye.
I heard Michael.
Bobby said aye.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and Madam Clerk, if I might suggest that the clerk call off the council member's names to do roll call to capture everyone.
Those in favor, Councilmember Holder?
Aye.
Councilmember Granis?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Thompson? Councilmember Bun?
Aye.
Councilmember Everett?
Uh, no.
Okay. So, um, those not in favor, say aye.
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 Let the record be straight. That was Council Avery and Councilman Thompson, Mayor Pro Tem Thompson. So the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so, uh, for the rest of the proposed budget amendments, do I have a motion?
Makes motion we approve to revise ordinance number twenty twenty oh four oh one. This is Art.
This is Michael. I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right. We'll move along next to staff reports, beginning with the town manager.
Well, we got another.
There's another budget amendment to be. Ordinance twenty twenty oh four oh two needs to be addressed.
All right. I'll entertain a motion for ordinance number twenty twenty dash oh four oh two.
This is Art. I move we approve ordinance number twenty twenty oh four oh two.
This is Michael. I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second for approval of number twenty twenty dash oh four oh two. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Okay. That makes us complete with the budget amendment. The next topic on the agenda will be staff report, beginning with the town manager. No report? Thank you, sir. Town attorney?
No report.
Town clerk?
No reports. Thank you.
Any other staff? Thank you. Uh, I would like to state for the record that we, uh, the town of Clayton did request public comment uh, with the deadline of today's date, four twenty twenty at, before twelve noon. And I received notification from the town clerk that there were no public comments submitted. With that being stated, uh, no need for informal discussion or public comment, and I will move on to council comments.
This is Art.
This is Michael.
I would like, I'd like for the town manager to have prepared for the May fourth meeting all the capital expenditures that are expected to be spent in May and June. I also think he should consider a hiring freeze. No positions replaced. Uh, if, if you have, if it's a mandatory position, then I think you need to try to transfer somebody from another department. I also think we need to not be buying any rolling stock right now. Because we do not know how bad this is going to be for next year. That's my comment.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Granis.
Uh, last, uh, Wednesday, we had a campo meeting and I just wanted to report that there was nothing of any consequence that directly affected Clayton or Johnston County. But one concern that I do have is I believe all of us are aware that Go Triangle has, uh, reached out to the county requesting, uh, some funding. And I don't know, uh, that funding, by the way, is for commuter rail. And what I don't know is, is what the status of that is with respect to the county. And it would be good to reach out to them if we've not done so to find out what their, their final position will be. Uh, when the, um, when the proposal was made at the, the commissioner's meeting, they were supposed to, I believe, uh, respond by the end of April. And I just see a note that Stacy said the county passed the funding for that. So that's good news. Uh, this Wednesday, I will be having an Electricity's meeting. Uh, I'm expecting that there might be something that could affect us. Uh, but I'll be getting to the town manager, uh, as, as a result of that meeting and letting know specifically what was discussed. And, uh, we'll go from there.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any other comment from any other council member? All right. Being no other comments, um, as the mayor, I just want to thank everybody in our leadership roles and in our staff and the employees for the due diligence that they're doing for the town of Clayton at this time in particular. Not that they're not always doing great work, but especially in these ever-changing times. Uh, thank you. And to our citizens, thank you for staying at home. We're showing that this is being an effective tool in fighting this epidemic. And I hope people will continue. And, uh, there will come a time when, you know, North Carolina will reopen and it may be sooner than later. We just don't know. But I want to express how pleased I am that people are taking this, uh, as seriously as they should and to keep up their due diligence because we are not out of the woods yet, as has been stated from the director of Johnston County Public Health. So thank you all for, uh, being here this evening. And if there's no other business to come before this town council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move with your motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Holder and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Jason Thompson. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for your time this evening. We are adjourned.